Aloha and welcome to the 28th meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Going straight into public hearing, calling agenda item number one, application number 19-15327 from Consolidated Entertainment LLC.
Yes, can you come back?
And let the record reflect that Vice Chair Lee will be recused for agenda item number one. Mr. Keuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Chief Keuchi representing the applicant. To my right is Rob Tengon, area manager for Consolidated Entertainment. To my left is Ms. Harai.
We have no additions or corrections to the original investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Keuchi. Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This matter was rescheduled from the January 27th meeting. Public hearing kept open. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the December 2nd preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Vice Chair Min prior to the public hearing.
And Commissioners, any objections or comments for Mr. Keuchi?
Motion to approve application number 19-15327.
Second.
It's been moved in second. It's been moved in second to approve agenda item number one, application number 19-15327. Any objections, any with reservation, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Okay, we will take, out of agenda, we will take agenda item number 14 as a related matter. And let the record reflect that Vice Chair Lee is recused also for agenda item number 14. Calling agenda number 14, request number 22-24284 from Kahala Cinema Company LLC. Mr. Keuchi.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Chief Keuchi for the applicant. The only change is requesting that the dates be changed from February 4th through April 29th. We went, we were not serving alcohol on February 1st, 2nd, and 5th.
February 4th, April 29th.
Right, correct. That would be the same number, please.
Motion to approve request number 22-24284 with the dates changed to February 4th, 2022, April 29th, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number 22-24284 with the verbiage provided by Vice Chair Min. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, request is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Vice Chair Lee, back please. Okay, calling agenda item number two, application number 21-22844 from Kaimuki Distributors LLC. Mr. O'Har Tilton, good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Ross O'Har Tilton, manager of the applicant. All right, no changes to the original report, all right, no corrections.
Thank you, Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you, Ms. Harai. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
There's no questions. Motion to approve application number 21-22844.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number 21-22844. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Tilton, good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number three, application number 22-23908 from Kamitoko LLC. Mr. Luke.
Good afternoon. As a record, effect Wayne Luke as attorney and authorized agent for the applicant, Kamitoko LLC. We have no changes to the investigation report.
Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Okay, Commissioners, type of action or any questions for Mr. Luke?
Motion to approve application number 22-23908.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number 22-23908. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Thank you, Ms. Luke.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number four, application number 22-23940 from Sess Corporation DVA Kenji's Bar and Grow. Ms. Cole.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. May I recall on behalf of the applicant, present to my left is Mr. Kenia Shinura owner. As per the investigation report, we did notify the commission at the last hearing, the preliminary hearing, that I did introduce the outer seating area. We did turn the device on, we stayed after this manner of thing. So the commission should have the device corrective times, which reflects the upper seating. We did also review the letter that was provided to us from the board of the university towers. We reached out to her. Apparently she thought that this would be a bar because the meal at the restaurant was a Kenji's Bar and Grill. But I did reassure her that it is a restaurant, we can provide her with a menu. We also provided her with kind of information line as well as the store content information so that if there's ever an issue with regards to anything, whether it's noise or anything, that she should contact us when you're in the store.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received one written protest, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions or type of action for Ms. Cole?
Motion to approve application number 22-23940.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number 22-23940. Any objections, any with reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye, application is approved. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Okay, calling agenda item number five, application number 22-24257 from Park Event Services LLC. Mr. Nikova.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Devin Nikova, representing Jay Park and Park Services LLC. I'd like to also introduce Emmanuelle Zibakaram. If I can have him spell his last name, please.
Sure. My name is spelled E-M-M-A-M-U-E-L, last name Z-I-B-A-K-A-L-A-M.
Also with us today to my right is Keylea Butts, K-E-Y-L-A-V-U-T-T-S. She's with HPU. Also on the Zoom is Jay Park from Park Services LLC.
Okay. Are you doing?
He's online, but he said he has no video or audio.
He's there.
He's there, but he has no video or audio.
It's okay. He just, he just called me to say, "I'm on, I'm on." So.
Okay, and is Mr. Hall here as well?
No, unfortunately, Mr. Hall's traveled. So he's going to be here.
Let's get started then.
Thank you. Very quickly, the event itself, we are looking at somewhere in the range of 2,000 to 2,500. So the numbers have changed from where we submitted. Also, the bar itself, we've been told, the bar is going to be separated by eight foot wide fence that will go, that will run the length of the bar. So they'll be between the general population and where the beer garden is, which is where, which is the only place where alcohol is served. There will be eight foot wide fence to separate both areas. Also, Ms. Butts is here, so if you have any questions regarding the event itself, she'd be happy to answer them as well.
I think my question is more directed to the promoter and the type of event that it is. I know that HPU is the landlord with regards to this event. I wish that Mr. Park or Mr. Hall was here to hear these comments and to facilitate the questions and the concerns that I have. So.
And Chair, we understand and we're willing, if you need us to, we can always, we are happy to extend it to next week so that either Mr. Park or Mr. Hall can be here in person to talk about it. That's totally fine. But Ms. Butts is here as well. She understands what's happening with the event as well, so she can do it.
I, I'll go ahead and proceed on this, only because we have a busy agenda next week.
I understand.
So first and foremost, I want to say that there's a, this is a different event compared to what the normal promoters are normally putting on here. And this is a cause of concern and this is a red flag for me seeing this. We have no promoters here. We don't have Matt Hall, we don't have Raymond Hall, we don't have Mr. Park here. These are the people who are ultimately responsible for this venue. This is, and it's my understanding that this venue is an EDM type of event who is, which is related and more commonly related in a rave environment and that type of concert venue. The promoters, specifically with Mr. Hall and Mr. Park, have had an excellent reputation here in heading other venues there at Aloha Tower, which consisted of no minors. And the type of venue that they facilitated was more towards a family environment type of venue with relaxing type of music, Hawaiian music, that type. In this situation, I'm afraid to say that we are opening the doors for a different venue of millennials and different type of partygoers. And that's the concern that I have.
I understand.
It's very clear in the preparation for this, for this, for this application, there's a lot of things that are missing from it, from your previous events that were held there. I don't see an EMT tent or anything there providing any type of medical service. There's reference to food trucks. I don't see it on any diagram here on your venue. There's reference to, you just made reference that alcohol would only be served in a beer garden. It's my understanding there's a VIP tent with an exclusive bar there as well. There's, what else concerns do I, do I have here? I guess the question is, there's reference that only beer only will be served? Is that true?
That is my understanding.
Just beer out of the beer garden. You will be offering no spirits, nothing else, just beer. Okay, so that takes one turn, okay. You know, and I, my concern is just the venue itself. And anybody who has had a long vast history here with this commission knows that I've taken very strong positions on these controversial types of licenses. And I don't want to go down that road again.
I understand.
So I was kind of surprised to see that Mr. Hall and Mr. Park even entertained this venue. Word of caution, that word does get back to them that ultimately they're responsible for this license. It will not be Matt Hall or the DJs. And a lot of times I see these promoters abandon that and they're held no accountability and yet it's held to the person who's holding the license, who has no involvement, accountment, or anything of it. And it's basically AFYing it out of here. And that's not what's going to happen here. That is not the culture that we're going to set, especially for a place that is considered to be Aloha Tower, which to me is considered a different type of venue that is going to bring in a different type of crowd. We're going to have vast millennials here. And I, I'll, I'll be able to say, and I'll say this for the record, is I don't think minors have the capacity to be in that environment with compromised situations here and be able to mingle responsibly. And I think it's just a big responsibility that they're taking and they're risking on this venue.
I understand, Chair. Thank you.
You know, specifically, I have a daughter who will be attending HPU. Is, you know, the dialect and the request will come up. That's going to ask, can I attend this venue? Absolutely not. Because I need to trust the venue, I need to trust the process, what's happening here. And this is the things that, you know, I've seen in the past that has happened. And we've seen some really good promoters be able to pull it off. However, promoters are not here. Mr. Hall is not here to represent or make any representations on this venue. And this, like I said, this format and the preparation for it and everything else with it, it's not, there's no dialect in it. And I think we got a little comfortable, sloppy and lazy here. Doesn't matter if you got approved two weeks ago. The same preparation and dialogue is provided and needs to be said at this commission and told to us and we need to be reassured that this is where we're going and this is the right thing to do.
I understand, Chair. Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioners, you guys have, please, jump right in.
Have tickets been sold already?
Yes.
And about how much?
As of the end of last week, they were about 1,500, which is where they're hoping to hit 2,000.
Are you able to determine what percentage of any of those 1,500 tickets are sold to minors?
Not that, I don't believe so, no. Because they're not asking for age, they're just verifying they're over 18.
It's my understanding that only tier two tickets are available for this venue. What that means, I don't know. I know that there's no VIP available for this venue.
What is tier two?
So tier two is just a general, general admission ticket.
And what is tier one then?
They were originally planning on doing a VIP area, which would have been their tier one, but sales have not been to the level that they were hoping, partly because of the increase in COVID numbers. And so they chose to just make it a general venue.
Okay, because on your website, there's a VIP tier one and a tier two. So that's the type of engagement I'm talking about. Everybody got to be clear what kind of venue this is. I don't want Mr. Hall, Mr. Park showing up here saying, yeah, this is all we have. And then yet Mr. Hall is on another page. Right, so the preparation, like I said, I've never seen them work with this promoter. Okay, and maybe I corrected, but to my knowledge, these type of venues are in a 500 capacity indoor type of thing. So exploring the outdoor, I get it, it's an opportunity. However, you're increasing capacity to 2,000 people, 2,000 minors, 21-year-olds, who knows what? That's the concern that I have. They've always done above 21, no ID check, well, ID checks, but obviously less risk of a group. Now you're bringing this venue in here and we're looking at what type of people are we going to have? Are we going to have a bunch of millennials? EDPs are up 50% and take up majority of the venues nowadays. And that's a cause for concern. And it's, it's if you follow the studies that have been done and what is the percentage of success versus non-success other than gathering and other than a whole bunch of socializing and stuff, it's always related to alcohol and drug use with this. And that's not a good venue. It's not something that we want to promote, it's something we want to be responsible for. Mr. Hall and Mr. Park, is my understanding going for a permanent or a permanent license? We need to scratch our heads and think about this. Is this the type of licensee that we want to have there? You know, so I would, I'm speaking with strong concern and you can tell by the difference in my voice because of the situations and the controversial issues that have come to this commission and we've had to fight and stand together and just basically, we're not, we're, we're not. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to go down that road that we did before. I'm not going to hear in a public about what's gone wrong and things that we could have done differently. So I'm going to take the proactive approach and speak very clearly about these subjects that I'm very aware of.
Thank you, Chair.
Chair.
I, I'll also add to that, that, you know, we've had a history with raves having a very negative impact on our community, especially our young people. And that was prior to COVID-19, guys. Raves are traditionally supposed to be packed house. That's the whole point, you know? And you can't do that anymore. I don't, I don't see folks being able to properly social distance just because of a crowd that large, you know? And we're seeing in other places, you know, they just had that terrible tragedy at Astroworld, that crowd control is really a problem. Because getting people to stay six, stay social distance while they're trying to have fun and socialize and dance and drink, it's, it's, it's impossible, basically, is what we're seeing. So, I mean, I see here that you folks are, you know, like, doing the social distance, beer garden, bag checks, ID and vaccination checks. But you know, the culture of raves is club drugs, you know? And I don't think it's fair for our investigators to be put in the position to have to determine if somebody is on illegal drugs. That's not their job. And so we, I'm also hesitant about this type of event, but, you know, if you folks are really planning and, you know, I, I'm, I'm open to it, but it's going to take a lot more planning and a lot more serious execution than the events you folks have put on in the past.
I understand.
And especially if you're going to have all ages, you know, HP, I'm a, I'm a very proud graduate of HP, by the way. I've been to many events here at Aloha Tower, both when I was at HPU and afterward and before. It's a hard venue because there's lots of places to come in and out. There, it's, there's lots of retail spaces, of course, that, you know, you need to be cognizant of. You have people drinking and things get rowdy. So I just, I, I share similar concerns, but perhaps not as strong because I don't have a teenage daughter, thank God. But I will.
Now you don't.
I will be too.
I do share the same concerns, you know? I was young at one point and I have been to events like this. But if, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm open to it if you folks can reassure the commission that you are going to be able to do this safely. And I agree with the Chair that I also don't want to hear about it because we have had a hard time and it took us a lot of effort to shut these kind of things down in the past. And we don't want to have to do it again.
I understand.
I, I think that Kyla will speak to some of your concerns. I, I just want to reassure the commission that we hear your concerns and what we want to do is take them back, make sure that we address both the promoters as well as the individuals that they're working with, review our plan. If it's still, we feel that everything is above board and online to make sure that we can do this safely because we really want to make sure it's done safely. Everything you said is entirely true. And we're hoping to establish, you know, a precedent that we're able to do this safely and work with the promoters and with the venue and with the individuals who are performing to make sure that that can actually happen. So we will take it back, take another review of exactly what we're putting forth. And if we feel like there's additional things that we need to add to it, we definitely will because safety is, is a number one concern, especially for the promoters as well as for the venue.
Yeah, and that's why we want to see the promoters here because, you know, we're, we're members of the public too, we hear the advertisement. So when we're hearing on the radio something's happening and then we don't see it in here, we have questions of whether you're being transparent or, you know, what we're actually approving. So we do want the communication to be seamless with the promoters as well.
Thank you.
So, speaking from the HPU standpoint, we definitely second, third, quadruple agree with all of the concerns as we also don't want to be the venue that is having these, we, we discussed this in, in very great depth before we approved this event as a venue. But as the venue representative who's working both with, with Park Event Services on the liquor as well as the promoter that we're contracted with, due to the timing of having to submit the liquor request, we were still working through some details with Mr. Hall. He is intending to have 10 EMTs onsite with a tent as well as several that are roaming through the venue for that safety aspect. We have, he has submitted the request for the blue lights. We are working, we are requiring he work with the same security company, private security company that does our other events. And we are determining the number which, due to the scope or the, the genre of this event, we have also are, are making sure the numbers are increased from what we may have done in the past with this size of a concert. Because we share those same valid concerns, but are also, also interested in doing this in a safe manner so that as our students, as you've said, this is their interest level of being able to provide an opportunity where they can safely attend an event like this as opposed to going someplace else where we're dealing with all the issues that go with the rave coming back to the dorm, dorm space. So our number one priority is also the safety of all of those attendees because we know some of our students will also be in that mix. So we are, we're actually meeting with the promoter again next week on a security meeting with all the security pieces to talk through the nuances of the venue. Again, requiring the standard company that we use for security and we've used for others helps ensure they already know the pukas of having an open venue. They, they know the spots that are always concerns where we've had people try and sneak in in the past. I am onsite as well for the venue standpoint, doing laps, making sure that everything is running the way that we need it to run, as is our security director for all of these types of events. So we very much share your concern, but our goal is that we can, with the right partnerships, create an atmosphere where these types of events can happen in a safe, safer manner than they have in other venues.
So, everything that I said, I'm expecting you guys take that into consideration. Small details, we need a list of the bartenders that are going to be dispensing liquor. It's not attached to your application. You clarify that it's only going to be beer and, like I said, update your floor plan showing the EMTs, how much is going to be available or what have you, and all the little details that we discussed. And let's take another stab at this probably next week. Will have to be next week prior to your venue, but properly plan and make the right representations here so we're comfortable making a decision moving forward.
Thank you, Chair.
I have one more, I would like to add that I wanted to say addressed possible. I mean, if you have, you know, 1,500 people or 2,000 people, let's say a thousand people wanted alcohol, it does look like this beer garden is going to hold that amount of people. So what would be the plan, you know, if everybody wanted to, wanted alcohol in a beer garden? And are you going to limit the number in there? Are you going to, I'm sure most, if somebody's in there, they're not going to leave. So we'll keep that in mind. It looks like we'll probably push this to next week. This is a liquor.
We will adjust that with Mr. Park and Mr. Hall as well. Thank you.
So one week?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
All right. Motion to continue, agenda item number five, application number 22-24257 for one week.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue, agenda item number five, application number 22-24257 for one week. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, Chair votes aye. Agenda item five is continuing till week.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda, to preliminary hearings, we're going into agenda item number six, application number 21-23374 from Aloha Prompto YQ LLC.
Yes, Chair, sorry. Do the prompt to call, so we can recuse this adjournment.
Let the record reflect that Vice Chair Lee will be recused from agenda item number six. Okay, do we have Mr. Nishiyoko or Mr. Shinzato online?
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners Ross Shinzato, authorized Legion. Also present are Yusuke Ishikawa, Steve Sombrero, members, and Erin Re, E R O N, R E A D. He's a manager. We have one change to the investigator's report. On page two, under description of the premises, it says most of the common area, outdoor space would be licensed. We have since cut back a lot of the space. It's probably about fifteen percent of what we had originally asked for. Exhibit A, the floor plan is an accurate floor plan of what we're asking for.
Mr. Shinzato, so Exhibit A, is it, so, is it the planters where it says E planter, is that the licensed area?
No, the planter is outside of the licensed area. The licensed area would be.
Where is that outdoor?
Long's and Bank of Hawaii.
And it's all within the solid lines, correct?
Yes, the darker solid line.
And the changes that you made were, once upon a time, more than that on the outside area? How, to which area?
We filed our application in June. In October, we reduced the area, which encompassed most of the, yeah, most of the common area, which went down Beach Walk and went through the building. We are no longer asking to license those areas.
This space is almost completely outdoors, correct?
Yes, the seating area is all outdoors.
And this is front in Kalakaua, correct?
Yes, Kalakaua Avenue would be, if you're looking at the floor plan, on the right side.
What kind of barriers are on the front, front in the sidewalk?
We have permanent planters, there's a water feature, and there'll also be planter boxes set up. There'll be about a six-foot wide entryway. Other than that, the Kalakaua side would be closed off by planters, or water features.
There is, it looks to be, there is a small buffer area between the water feature, planters and the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yes, between the water feature and plant, movable planters, there's about a six-foot, six-foot distance. Seven foot.
You understand my concern, right, Mr. Shinzato?
Yes, we have hosts outside at all times. And then also the server would be within the serving area.
Gentlemen, you have to make sure that your patrons remain inside of your licensed area at all times if we approve this. Do you understand that?
Yes, that's we are aware.
Mr. Shinzato, since this still is the preliminary hearing, what about the concerns? Do you wanna address the concerns that are listed in the investigator's report?
Yes. Upon obtaining a license, we will be registering the company.
So, you'll be addressing all these items on the investigative report prior to public?
Well, we would need to register, after obtaining a license, we would need to register. We won't be able to register before then. But, yes, we will.
Okay, I'm on your floor plan. There's a, looks to be a walkway that's going towards Long's that's going to be blocked by your premises. Is that correct? I'm looking at Exhibit A. I don't know if you can see this, but it's this arrow that goes right here. And it seems like it's blocking off a walkway that goes around the building. Are you folks blocking any walkways?
Oh, no. The walkways will be open. And that area would be available for Long's also. If you see the, I will point the arrow.
And so, Long's is also going to be using this space, Long's, you folks have talked to them and they are okay with this?
Yes, Steve Sombrero is the property manager for the property.
And, but there's a separate entrance I see that is not blocked by the license, by the proposed premises. Is that correct? There's another entrance for Long's? Or are you folks blocking the only entrance?
It won't be blocked, it will be licensed, but we won't be blocking that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a concern, Mr. Shinzato. Is there another entrance to Long's that doesn't, that doesn't have, doesn't require customers or patrons to Long's to have to walk through your licensed area?
Do you think that's the only entrance?
I see one that there's one right here, but is that not an entrance to Long's? If this is the only entrance to Long's, that they have to come through your licensed premises to go to Long's jobs. I have a major concern with that.
We can address that.
Can I, can I, this is Steve Sombrero. I'm with Cushman and Wakefield, Kenyon Brooks.
Yes.
Also the principal of one beer. I am the manager for the property. And there is ample access to Long's. There will be no blockers on access to Long's. I assure you.
Okay, and that's not my only concern. My concern is that in order for anyone to enter Long's, to go shopping in Long's, they have to go through a licensed premises, a liquor licensed premises. Is that correct?
That's not correct.
Okay, so there's another entrance that's on outside of the licensed premises that they.
That's, that's correct.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Bank of Hawaii also has access that customers can get to the bank, so has CBS Long's that does not cut through the licensed area.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That was my concern. Gentlemen, probably before the public hearing, we'd wanna see a better floor plan than what has been provided because what you're seeing and what the floor plan shows doesn't really support that. So, I'm questioning whether we have an accurate floor drawing at all. I mean, Mr. Sombrero, are you aware of Exhibit A? Are you looking at it?
I am not looking at Exhibit A, but I remember from February that we, first of all, nobody will be blocked. And we do not allow customers to walk the licensed areas to access any of the other tenants, including the public elevators.
Okay, so like I said, an updated floor plan or something more clear and concise to tell us what it is? If it's an entrance and exit, this entrance right here, is there a hostess station? I don't know what it is. Yeah, we'd like to see things labeled accurately so we know what we're looking at so that I can get a good idea of what your premises is looking like or what you propose it to look like. So, we can better spot if there's any issues.
Yes, we can do that.
If I can chime in, Mr. Shinzato, could you work with licensing to address the access issues raised by Vice Chairman and to ensure that her concerns are addressed?
Yes, we'll contact the licensing section. Thank you.
I'd like to entertain our continuance for this. Mr. Shinzato, is that okay?
Yeah, I just had a thing to throw in. Sorry, no, no, no.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, one other thing, as we move forward and, you know, I think we're gonna look at continuing, but I'd like to see on your floor plan, these darkened areas, are they a hard, a hard item that people cannot get past? Or is it just a line you're gonna say is there and people can walk freely in and out? I mean, is it a solid barrier on these dark lines? Or how do you, like, plan to make it solid since it's an outdoor event or an outdoor area?
Yes, we can do that. Those lines are just drawn to identify the boundary.
Okay, thank you.
How long do you need, Mr. Shinzato? One week, two weeks?
One week, one week is good.
One week is okay. Motion to continue, Application Number Two One Dash Two Three Three Seven Four for one week.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number Two One Dash Two Three Three Seven Four for one week. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. The Agenda Item Number Six has been continued to one week. We'll see you next week, gentlemen, with all the items requested and a better picture as far as what we're talking about. It's a busy agenda next week, so please come prepared and get it circulated to us ahead of time so we can move on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get Vice Chair Lee back, please? Okay, calling Agenda Item Number Seven, Application Number Two Two Dash Two Three Five Two Six from Adsim Cars LLC, DBA Tools.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Alexander, last name B E L Y A E V. I'm a resident agent of Adsim Cars LLC, DBA Tools.
Did you have an opportunity to review this investigative report?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to.
I do, I do have some small correction to report.
Okay, please, same reasons.
Yeah, so for delivery team, we actually got two option, our team or third-party team. So, we decided to do with our team. So, we're gonna hire our.
You wanna refer what page you're talking to, talking about?
Page number three.
The issue?
Issue, correct. I go with issues, so.
And the issue states that the applicant mentioned they will partner with drives such as Uber Eats. Is that what you're addressing?
We got two options. We actually decide to go to, yes, about that.
Okay.
Actually, we decide to go to with our drivers.
So, you will no longer be using the third-party?
Correct, because we actually declined it, yes, so.
Anything else you wanna address in this report?
So, also about establishment, all orders will be taken as establishment. It's will be received and will be fulfilled, all orders and the print receipt right there. So, it's a page number four. Also about building success. It's also available public access, twenty-four hours access with security.
Okay, how are, how are you remedying that issue? I'm sorry, what you said, security?
Yes, it's twenty-four hours accessibility with security.
I think the conflict here is you won't be doing any conduct and any physical transaction within the proposed premise. Is that what it is? You're hosting it as a storage?
It's like warehouse. Warehouse and everything is gonna be delivered from warehouse to your customers.
Maybe what we should do, sir, is we should back up. Let's talk about what your business model is and what you're exactly trying to do instead of, and then we can correct this. So, let's start from the beginning.
Okay.
What is the purpose of your business?
Yeah, business is a retail store with no front. It's a delivery to the customers only, only delivery.
Okay, so I'm a customer, how do I get delivery service?
So, basically, we got website. You order from website. All orders get to in a computer station in establishment. Will be received, print receipt and fulfill the order and send the driver out.
Okay, and you're operating, so through your website, so to speak, you have inventory and whatever you're selling at that price point on your.
Correct. It's our account, our prices, we control everything.
Okay, so I go online, I order it. How do you do age verification?
Age verification, it will be, we're gonna have some special tools like ID scanners, each driver will have. It's gonna have scan each ID.
At the time of delivery or at the time of order?
Correct. At the time of delivery and at the time of order, it will be put a date of birth.
So, at the time I order and I go online, I'm gonna enter in my date of birth?
Correct.
Okay, so I order a bottle of wine, right? And then I'm gonna ask for you to deliver it to IL, right, or whatever, Waikiki, wherever.
Okay.
I put it in today, you're gonna deliver when, tomorrow?
Same day delivery.
Same day delivery.
We try to do it as soon as possible.
So, this, this concept that you're introducing isn't anything foreign. It's how you're going about it is the question. Is the question how you kind of moving forward. What's particularly a concern for me is that you have no liquor experience.
Correct.
On your bio, right?
Yes.
So, your, the concept that you came up with this, was it due to your experience as, like, what was it, Ubering? Or is that where the concept?
No, it's just new model. It's a kind of unusual model. I understand that. So, but it's gonna follow all rules.
Okay, and you're aware of those rules?
Definitely.
So, when you come to my house.
Correct.
And you're gonna present me the bottle of wine.
Correct. I'll ask your ID first. Driver will ask your ID first. It's gonna be scanned on a tool. It's gonna be saved by four records in the system. So, every time person can come, it's in the indicator and check records and books at establishment. Also, it's gonna check your anticipation visibility. If you drunk or not, driver can decline there, give you a bottle of wine if you drunk, example, right? And third part, same person who ordered from website gotta be open the door and receive a bottle of wine. Same make the order, not somebody different come up and say, I'm here for her.
So, has to be the card holder who presented the order. Has to be present at the residence.
Correct, exactly. From website, same person who ordered it, gotta open the door and receive the bottle.
Okay, so your drivers are employees of yours?
Correct.
Okay, and they're gonna, they're gonna go through the class and they're gonna.
Correct, I will teach them everything, yes. Because I'm actually worked with, I got experience with Instacart company.
Yes.
And actually, I myself deliver alcohol to customers here in Honolulu from Instacart. So, they teach me. So, I follow examination for how deliver liquor from company. So, and I do it myself. I scan ID, I know how things goes because I was teaching Instacart.
But the Instacart user is not necessarily the person that's purchasing the liquor.
But I decide to, in my safety, I would decide to edit one more step.
And then they don't scan the ID either?
We do. We do on the phone, on the phone. If you do not scan it and don't have signature, it's not gonna be go through. Order not gonna be completed.
On Instacart?
Instacart, Instacart, from Costco, example, yeah. It's from Costco deliver, for example, beer to customers.
Have you done Instacart here in Hawaii or have you done it in Canada?
Correct, here, here, yeah. That's why I know area, I know how things goes, how rules goes, so. It's a little bit.
And you as a driver, are you licensed?
I'm sorry?
As Instacart being you the driver, from your experience.
Correct.
Did you, are you, do you have a blue card? Or do you, do you have, you claim to have liquor experience from that?
Yes. Basically, it's my experience how follow the rules and respect rules.
Have you ever come into a conflicted situation in which you had to refuse itself?
No, never.
It's always been accepted by someone.
Usually customers, we kind of, Instacart be company, and customers, when it's ordered, they know it's gonna be checked everything very well. And we never have fake ID, nothing like that. So, we got a really good application system for scanning.
I have a question. Please state that your business hours are going to be from nine AM to eleven PM daily.
Correct.
Does that mean eleven PM delivery or eleven PM ordering?
No, actually, uh, because, uh, we work only in, uh, five miles radius. So it's gonna be like twenty, thirty minutes delivery.
No, I'm asking though, when your cutoff is?
Right, so basi- basically...
If I go on here at eleven oh one PM?
Right.
On your site, will I be able to order something?
Eleven oh one?
Yes.
No.
Okay, so what?
It's a system gonna correct at eleven.
So the orders stop at eleven PM?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let me further, her hypothetical. If she orders at ten fifty-nine, you take the order and the delivery will go out?
Correct.
Do you have a business perchance?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a business plan?
Business, business plan?
Plan, like you wrote up some document to identify what your goals are as a business?
I mean, uh, estimate.
You have something in writing?
N- not with me.
Okay. Um, I'm not gonna require that.
Okay.
Um, I have a question.
Sure.
So, you know, you're, so we're talking that your delivery drivers are gonna be your employees.
Correct.
You wanna make sure they're trained. So you know too as a licensee, right? That if they make a mistake, if they decide to scan someone else and give that product to them or let someone go, you are the person held liable for that to this commission.
Definitely.
Um, another question. I know that your premises will not be open to customers, that this is a business model where it's...
Full delivery only.
It's acting as delivery only. However, because you are going to be using a space that is licensed, you will need to allow our investigators to inspect the premises whenever...
No problem.
Whenever they need to, is that going to be a problem?
No.
Commissioners, any other questions or type of action for the applicant? I have a follow-up, actually, um, I think it's quite interesting, um, and how do I say your last name?
B E, uh, Y D E, Billy.
Okay. Um, you know, we've seen this type of delivery service that was very specialized, um, with regards to the Kakao era, which... Yeah? Which was more catered to a wine, the type of wine you cannot purchase, um, within a normal store or that these, these contacts or these licensees have exclusively purchased from other wineries on a higher price point range.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in that concept, it was relatable because in, in that instance, you're, you're creating a demand for something you can't get. So this is a, this is expediting a request so that you can get a higher end or a product that's not available in Hawaii at the normal stores. In this situation, you know, I guess, you know, coming from, we've, we've gone through the Instacart services and we've evolved since then and other people have tried to look at different business models on how to facilitate the same request. Knowing your competitor will be Instacart, right? What, what is the difference? Like what, am I missing something?
No, 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 you, you're right. Um, example, Kakaku wine, if you say Kakaku wine, we do deliveries almost next day. I, I would, I talked to them already, you know, we discussed some things already together, but, uh, a little bit different. And we have actually everything already in stock, not just special wine, we sell everything. Uh, second thing about Instacart, Instacart, they're not able to deliver, deliver right away. Very often, we don't have enough drivers. So it's gonna be delivered late, late, maybe three, four hours wait, maybe, you know, something like that. But in our case, we promise delivery under one hour. So it's no delivery service like this in Hawaii. So it's new model, it's, uh, no, uh, competition in that section. So, um, we try, we want people to, you know, just celebrate, if somebody celebrate, you know, we just wanna, you know, quick delivery, make him smile. Try to be simple.
Will you be, um, be selling anything else besides alcohol?
I'm sorry?
Will you be selling anything else besides alcohol?
Uh, we're thinking about, but we're not decide yet, maybe some snacks, example, for the beer, example. We have, uh, food, uh, food safety also, uh, license.
Fairly, I, I just, I'm wondering about what else besides, you know?
Example, example, we, we, we not decide yet, but I think, example, chips, right? Chips, snacks, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a list of what you're intending to sell as far as liquor goals?
Uh, we actually decide to contact with, uh, we don't wanna go too far before the license get, you know, move forward. Uh, we actually gonna contact with, uh, wholesale company and most popular items will be placed. On, uh, sell items, most popular.
Do you, do you have your website up and running yet?
Not yet.
Not yet?
It's still working on it, yes, because we, it's, uh, cost a lot of money a little bit, so maybe it's, uh, we don't know example, it's gonna move forward or not, so.
I'm sorry, going back to my other question, gentlemen.
Sure.
It sounds like you don't have an actual business plan. And what I think I heard you say is you don't have agreements in effect currently for purchase of alcohol, is that correct?
What, what do you mean?
Do you already have agreements with wholesalers?
No, not yet, no.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna ask that you do provide a plan. Give us a broad overview. You can even Google business plan and find templates.
Okay.
But to give us some idea of what your goals are, how you expect to achieve those goals. And my concern is, a lot of what you're saying to us today is perspective. It's ideas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it would help me at least to see them in writing, what, what you plan to do
Sure.
For your business.
Definitely.
How much time did you need to do that?
Um, can I ask you a question, sir? Uh, so basically, I gotta also contact with wholesalers and do ex- or not?
No, no, just, um, what... The, the plan, the idea of the plan is to essentially lay out for our benefit and it helps you to, as a business owner, to identify what you hope to accomplish. I don't need you to get into agreements or contracts at this point, but who's your prospective, um, wholesaler? You know, just identify who's, what's the market gonna provide for you as a business owner?
Okay.
So that you can deliver your product. Just for some clarity for yourself and for us as a commission.
Okay.
And it's not a right or wrong exercise, it's more to see some, um, precision in terms of what you're trying to put together.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Because this is a new concept and we haven't really licensed, you know, like besides the wine folks, this is much different. This is a full-on retail operation, but with delivery. And also, you know, they, it does, your, uh, what you want to do does conflict with some of our laws. Namely, that you're not gonna be allowing any customers on the premises. And so, um, in order for us to move forward with a new concept like this, we need to fully understand what it is. Um, so a business plan would help us understand that, um, and be prepared so that we can make our decision with all the knowledge available.
Um, just one quick comment. Um, along with his business, um, with Commissioner, or Commissioner's business plan, I think you should make sure you update us in regards to how many employees you're looking to have. Cause as you said, right, your whole idea or plan is to deliver within one hour. If you get, let's just say, you, you go forward and you get this going. You get seven hundred people at nine o'clock to order liquor for you. If you only have two or three drivers, you ain't getting seven hundred people their liquor in an hour. That, so I mean, you know, so I, I'd like to see also, I mean, with the plan, an idea of how much people you're looking to have is drivers. Cause they're also going to be part of the understanding of what they have to do.
Thank you.
Why don't, why don't we do a two weeks continuance, but can you come back in two weeks?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, motion to continue, application number two two dash two three five two six for two weeks.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number seven, application number two two dash two three five two six for two weeks. Any objections? Any reservations, seeing none, treble to eye? Agenda item number seven is continued for two weeks, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Come please.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number eight, application number two two dash two four zero zero eight from Doraku Capale LLC.
Uh, yes, it's a possible contact, I'll have to read this, this agenda item.
That the record reflect that Vice Charity will be recused from agenda item number eight. Okay, proceeding with agenda item number eight, Mr. Aoki, go ahead.
Uh, thanks to you, Madam Chair, uh, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Aoki, K E V I N A O K I. I'm the operator, managing, uh, managing, uh, member of Doraku Capale LLC. Request the, the, the license.
Mr. Aoki, I only have one question, uh, relating to this issue maybe. When are you guys gonna have reservations?
Could you clarify?
Why can't I make a reservation online and present my COVID card?
Oh.
It's been the darkest mystery prior to COVID.
I'm looking at my...
I'm very nervous.
Except reservations.
So, okay.
And I have stood in line.
Will this location accept reservations?
Mr. Aoki, I have stood in line with twenty-two of my girlfriends prior to the Bruno Mars concert.
Can I, uh, put your, uh, picture in front?
That's the correct answer.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, maybe I should be viewed as a suggestion versus a request.
That was the right answer.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, motion to approve, application number two two dash two four zero zero eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, application number two two dash two four zero zero eight. Any objections? Any reservations, seeing none, treble to eye? Application is approved. Alright, Mr. Aoki, take into consideration what was sent to them.
No reservations.
Suggestions. Okay, can we get Vice Chair Lee back, please? Okay, moving on, we're calling agenda item number nine, application number two two dash two four one seven seven from Zetan. Mr. Who?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner, members, Kenneth, who are appearing for the applicant. Also appearing is Makoto Asikawa. Last name E T, S E T A W A, is an officer of the applicant. We have just, um, two things with regard to the licensing investigative report. Number one, on page one, under the paragraph section background, second paragraph. The primary decision makers regarding liquor sales and service. The name Kenichi Inomoto should be deleted and Mr. Makoto Asikawa's name should be inserted. He's all, he's been the primary decision maker with regard to liquor. Um, the second comment is that if this commission is so inclined to grant this temporary license, we'd ask that it be issued effective April one, twenty twenty two.
Okay, Mr. Who, your comments are noted.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, type of action or any questions for Mr. Who?
I'm sorry, can you repeat what the effective date you would like, Mr. Who?
April one, twenty twenty two.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve, application number two two dash two four one seven seven with the effective date of April first, twenty twenty two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, application number two two dash two four one seven seven with the verbiage provided by Vice Chairman. Any objections? Any reservations, seeing none, treble to eye? Application is approved, thank you, Mr. Who?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number ten, application number two two dash two four one eight nine from Royal Coil LLC, Mr. Goltz.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neil Goltz, appearing on behalf of Royal, Royal LLC. Appearing with me is Brian Heath, a member. Uh, we have no changes to the investigative report. This is for the former Papa Card location on Eisenberg.
Motion to approve, application number two two dash two four one eight nine.
Second.
Okay, moving second to approve, application number two two dash two four one eight nine. Any objections? Any reservations, seeing none, treble to eye? Application is approved, Mr. Goltz, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number eleven, application number two two dash two four two nine eight from HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company, Mr. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Chair members. Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Mr. Ry Robert Uyoka, on behalf of HMS Fols. Also present is Mr. Grant Matsuno, he's a food and beverage manager. At this time, we have no changes to the investigative report. Um, this for a continued catering liquor license for the temporary bar located in the Mauna, New Mauna concourse. Uh, we are pursuing a restaurant liquor license to replace this temporary bar.
We appreciate you bringing everybody in, Mr. Uyoka, but that's not necessary.
Commissioners, type of action? Um, motion to approve, application number two two dash two four two nine eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, application number two two dash two four two nine eight. Any objections? Any reservations, seeing none, treble to eye? Application is approved, thank you, Mr. Uyoka.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number twelve, application number two one dash two three four four three from Watapi Wedding Corporation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Ryan Hamaguchi appearing on behalf of the applicant. And also present is Mr. Fumiyaki Tachida, who's the general manager of Honolulu, uh, operation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We have no change, uh, sorry. Um, we have no changes to the, uh, licensing investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners, type of action or any questions?
A motion to approve, application number two one dash two three four four three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, application number two one dash two three four four three. Any objections? Any reservations, hearing none, treble to eye? Application is approved, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, taking off the pace, sir. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, request number two two dash two four one one four from A6 LLC, DBA Holly Eva Beach House.
Yes, I think to a possible contact, I'll have to choose, uh, this agenda item as well as agenda item number fifteen.
So you're re- recusing thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, correct?
We have fourteen.
Yeah, we're...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thirteen and fifteen, okay, that's a record difference. Good. I'm sorry. Vice Chair Lee, will be recused from agenda item number thirteen? Mr. Nikoba, okay?
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, Devin Nikoba here, representing, uh, A6 LLC. To my left is Travis Grobe, T R A V I S G R O B E, he is also here from A6 LLC.
Okay. So, Mr. Nikoba?
Yes.
I think we have two members on the commission here that recall this case, correct?
It was five years ago, yes.
Yes.
Yes, Chair.
So I was quite, oh, you have...
You too?
Okay, there's three of us that recall, we have good memories on this. And I guess we'll dive right in with this. Um, we, you know, history is always important and precedent is always important when we're reviewing over these cases and how we move forward. Um, and if, without our good memory and good grace and we tend to remember these ones especially because of the amount of public, um...
There was, yes.
Scrutiny.
There was some scrutiny.
Prior to COVID, we had busloads here with children protesting in our audience as well with signs around.
Very angry people.
Now...
Thankfully, we don't have that right now.
Times have changed, yes.
Yeah, they, we didn't, we don't have that right now and I, I, I'm pleasantly surprised to see it coming as a request. However, my question is that I know that, um, I know that neighborhood board notification is required, have you?
Yes, we have.
Okay, what type of, what type of feedback did you receive?
We actually haven't received anything. We sent the notice that we were going to be making this application. Uh, it was sent to the board chair, uh, which is what we were required to do. Uh, we sent it, uh, we did, uh, required certified mail, um, and we received no feedback at all.
Okay, and how long ago did you do that?
Uh, it was two weeks.
And then they received it within ample time to properly respond to the charity?
Actually, I'm sorry, it was longer than this one. It's about, it was actually three weeks, I'm sorry.
Three weeks?
Yes.
And then you received confirmation that they have, they have been able to receive it for a three week time up until this charity?
That is my understanding, yes. We, I have...
The certified receipt came back and it's three weeks, so someone did sign.
They said it was delivered, they said it was delivered, and so... They said it was delivered, they said it was delivered, and so that was my understanding. They, they received it.
Okay. So, you know, I guess that was one of my concerns is, one, was they given proper notification and time to be able to respond to this request? How, what dialogue have you guys had with the public with regards to this request?
Well, the, the initial problem that we had five years ago was that there was an issue with the wastewater treatment. So we were required to put in an entire unit that was going to take care of the wastewater to make everything okay with regards to using the second floor. And that was actually put onto us by the Department of Health. We complied with that, put the unit in. What happened when we put the unit in is that it then triggered an SMA, which is why it's taken so long because we had to get the SMA taken care of. It was a number of years. In fact, the unit itself has been, I believe, running for about two months now. And there, there have been no problems. We haven't heard, we haven't had any feedback from Department of Health. Additionally, for us, at least during COVID time, upstairs allows for open air dining. Downstairs is all indoors. So, I think, the last time I spoke to Travis, he said, you know, they have like five, ten groups that come through? I mean, it's, we're not having as much people, basically.
Definitely not, yeah.
So. So being able to open up the second floor because it has the open air, I think will make people more comfortable. And we'd like to open it up, but we'd like to open it up and allow people to enjoy drinks on the second floor.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, Mr. Nikoba, that was the main issue, was the issue of any potential effluent going into the ocean or into Loko Ea Pan, which is directly behind this building. But the other concern from the public was the noise. And although, yes, open air does provide us with some safety or COVID mitigation, it also increases a noise impact to the community. And this is still the North Shore. It's not wetiki. We need to be cognizant that people live there, live close by these areas. The sound carries very far. And this is a, this is a, you know, kind of country community, not.
I understand.
They're, they're not, they don't want parties all night on the second floor keeping everybody up at night.
We understand.
Which we appreciate.
Of course.
So, that's our, that was the other concern from the public five years ago. And I would assume they have that same concern today.
Mm-hmm.
So you folks are not the only licensee in the area that we have issues with the public not wanting a party environment in Haleiwa, which we take very seriously. So.
I understand.
Do you folks have any comments on that issue? Have you talked to the community? You have any plans for noise mitigation? Your hours reduced, you know, give us some, give us something.
We, we have very limited hours right now, especially with COVID. We were pretty hard hit and a lot of our business was tourist-related. I can tell you we're in no way close to a nightclub or a night spot. There is not loud music blasting. There is a vocal element on the North Shore, which we always listen to and try to work with. But of course, some people are just gonna be having problems with anything. I can tell you that any music that we have is a one person on guitar singing softly for the restaurant. Maybe a band of two or three, but it's not a nightclub atmosphere where we have loud music blaring or we're rocking out and jumping up and down. We've got one or two local musicians from the area. We used to, and we haven't for a long time, but if allowed to, yes, we would like an element of live music, but very, very limited in scope. It's not, it's not what the concerns would be. They're pretty much just someone playing guitar softly while you eat dinner and have a nice atmosphere.
And how late are you folks open currently?
Currently, we're open till nine o'clock, I believe.
And even if COVID restrictions are lifted, you're gonna remain at nine o'clock or you folks looking to push it later?
Currently, right now, that's all we can support. It would be nice if we could be open later, but there's, there's not the business there.
Just be cognizant of the noise and the noise.
Of course, of course.
We, we don't want them coming over here.
I don't want them coming over there. I don't want them to come to my place either, okay? We wanna, we wanna be open for business, provide a service, provide jobs, and not cause any problems. That's always been the goal.
Thank you.
Mr. Nikoba, if I can share a concern I have is, I understand and accept the representation that notices given to the neighborhood board, but I feel more comfortable if there was actual notice and the neighborhood board was able to vet the request. Because my memory is, even remotely accurate, I do recall there was opposition for various reasons including traffic. I might be wrong, but that's a vague recollection. And I would not want to approve this without input from the public, especially the Haleiwa and North Shore community. I feel if we are gonna go forward with this request, it should be on a limited basis with the report to come back and so that the community has the opportunity to see what is actually going on and to provide comment at a later date.
Thank you, Commissioner. That is totally fine.
Since we're on that, have you attended a neighborhood board meeting?
I have not.
Have you, Travis?
Many, but not recently.
Okay, so there has been no dialogue with the public as far as informing them that you guys have intentions or support from the public with intentions of opening a second floor, right?
I mean, we have notified the neighborhood board. And I will say that in the last five years since we started down this road, we've gone through the SMA process, satisfied all the concerns that they had with the Department of Health. Actually, within a couple of months, we installed that sewage treatment plant at a huge cost and weren't allowed to turn it on for years until the SMA finally came through. In that time, we've operated and been open and have not had any complaints from the community. There is an element of people that just don't like what my grandfather does and will always stand up, you know, against it. But I do wanna say that we've been open now for, it was just before my daughter was born, so about six years now. And we have worked really well with the community. We've given a lot of jobs, we've kept things going. During COVID, we've been severely impacted. We're operating at about twenty percent. And just doing what we can to stay open, but during all that time, we haven't had that kind of outpouring until... Yeah, I, I, I think we've done a pretty good job of working well within the community. And if we need a little bit more time to have a further dialogue, I think it'll be hard pressed to find anything in the last five years that's been a problem.
I think that this situation has gone dormant and people forgot about it. And that's, that's the brutal truth of what's happening. The community will not continue to engage you if they're not aware of anything new happening. So I think it's important that the community be aware that you are entertaining that thought of reopening the second floor and you're, you need to convince the community that you've done all these efforts and you were able to address their issues. If, I know that we will have people who will question you and I'd rather the dialogue be happening with you folks as landlords and, and as tenants or whatever you wanna call it, but I am inclined not to, to entertain this as a request. It is either, it needs to publicly be heard or I need to hear from you folks how you guys have engaged with the community because this was such a controversial issue again. And if you come back with that report that you did, basically you attended the neighborhood board meeting and these people were present, it's on the, you guys are on the minutes with it and you guys can show some type of, you know, responsibility with that and that you guys were good stewards in getting this information out and also addressing any other issues that do come up, whether it's traffic or anything. I would feel more comfortable looking at this request in a better perspective rather than slide this request through and not having any information out there. Because as you've said, you really haven't entertained or even gone to the public to say, this is our intentions. We've had an opening the second floor. Your dialogue is either gonna be great, I can't wait to get up there to see the view have, have a sunset, or it's gonna be, can you keep the doors closed after eight o'clock? That's the type of dialogue and engagement we wanna hear. Rather than it leak out there and then it comes back as complaints to us, why did we do this? Why did we do that? So we wanna have, see things clearly through two sides of. We can.
Thank you, Chair.
Continue the issue or we can also discuss it and we can discuss it openly here as commissioners. That we can do a probationary, we can do whatever this commission decides to entertain or what thinks is best.
Well, you know, this is for you guys too, because what you don't want to happen is you get this up and going and then people in the public are calling us to come and.
Shut us down.
Shut you guys down and be getting violation after violation or having to come to commission to address violations.
Of course, and we don't want that.
Because of complaints from the public.
Yeah, and we, we.
You don't, you don't want that. Okay, so we don't want that either. We can, I mean, I would undertake a probationary period. I mean, how? You guys haven't gotten any response from the neighborhood board. Is it possible for you guys to put in a request to get put on the agenda?
Sure.
So maybe continuance? What, what would you, what would you prefer? Do you wanna do a continuance?
I wanna, whatever is.
Come back, let us know how it goes?
Whatever makes the commission comfortable.
Well, do you know when that neighborhood board meets?
Well, I would have to go look that up. I'm sorry, it's not coming to me off the top.
Can we recess?
Yeah, let's have a, let's have a week recess so that we can get some additional information.
I mean, either, and then I can go run and look.
Before we recess, I wanna make a comment to the gentleman's comment. Whether, you know, we, we hear on occasion people opposing a license application because it's either nimmie, not in my backyard, or in your example, maybe some people don't appreciate certain things that your grandfather may have done or did. But for us as a commission, we wanna hear process. We wanna provide process to the community. And we'll hear, if there are protests, we, we do consider what the bases for those protests are. But again, it, it does give the community the ability to state their concerns. We can weigh those concerns and then hopefully make a better decision.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, recess.
Yes, so. Recording stopped. Okay, we are back on the record, back from recess. I will recall the matter, calling agenda item number thirteen, request number two-two dash two-four-one-one-four from A6 LLC DBA Haleiwa Beach House. Commissioners?
Okay, so.
The neighborhood, the next neighborhood board meeting?
Twenty seconds.
Is twenty seconds.
So.
So we basically need to make a request to here tomorrow, I believe, to see if we can get onto the agenda?
Sure.
And in event you're not able to get on the agenda, we can go ahead and continue it again after that. But when you do come back for, before for this request, please specify your attendees who was there, what type of conversations happened, what their concerns was, you know what I mean? Because the minutes will not be available and the minutes will not point that out. So we're more concerned in the direct dialogue that you guys have with the community members.
Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Grobe was also mentioning to us that, or mentioning to me during the recess that there has been some dialogue with the community around the specific, like right in that vicinity, correct?
Well, when this first came up with the noise complaint, we, we did go to everyone around Loko Ea, anyone that would actually hear anything. And, you know, we didn't have any complaints. We actually had a couple of people sign off saying that it, it really wasn't a problem. Again, the people that were complaining live nowhere near the restaurant. But we did reach out and drive around to everyone around Loko Ea. And then also along that, in terms of reaching out to the community and working with them, like I said, we've been in operation now for a number of years with no traffic issues, no partying or loud noise issues. We also started a scholarship program with Wailea High School. We have some of the kids in their culinary class come over and meet with our executive chef and he kinda shows them what life is like in the kitchen. Like we've, I think, done a pretty good job of community outreach. And granted that we've been working on this for a long time, we would be okay definitely going in front of the neighborhood board and talking with them if that's needed to move this along forward. But we've been open and operating in the community and we can't survive without the community. You know, especially right now with tourism being what it is and how much we used to rely on them. We rely on them as our customers, as our employees, as our neighbors, and we want the best for everybody. So, yeah, we've, we've tried to take a very open approach to working with everyone in the community. There are elements that are just always gonna be unhappy with what we do, but that doesn't mean we're gonna shy away from it or not show up and talk it out. So I, I'd be fine. We were talking about getting on the schedule for neighborhood board committee anytime, of course.
Absolutely. So I commend you. There's no doubt that you are good stewards in the Haleiwa community. However, this still is a process that we're gonna go through that has continually been the process and part of transparency as far as allowing the community to have feedback and, and opportunity for you folks to address those issues if any.
Sure.
If there's no issues that arise from that, great, great. Then come back, then talk about it again. I'd love to be in that position to be able to move this forward. But moving it forward without that assurance that that dialogue has not happened is something that is worth waiting for rather than people protesting your, your business or coming the other way, which is going along the, you know, reporting violations and then we're constantly there. So it, it takes parts on both actions, on both sides.
Thank you.
And I would encourage you too, if there are folks in the community that are supportive and, you know, that, to have them submit some testimony in support of you folks so that it can be on the public record that not everybody is against this. This is, lots of people like it in the community.
I'd say many more for, and we can definitely do that.
I, I agree, I agree. Okay, so February twenty-fourth meeting, is that okay to reschedule?
Thank you, Madam.
Alright, motion to continue, agenda item thirteen, request number two-two dash two-four-one-one-four to February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue, agenda item thirteen, request number two-two dash two-four-one-one-four to February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none, chair votes aye. Agenda item thirteen is continued to February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners.
Can we get Vice Chair Lee back? Always recusing from fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
Okay, calling agenda item number fifteen, request number two-two dash two-four-three-two-three from Ms. Cole on behalf of Good Company Two Point O LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of Paint and Jigger. Headed to my left is one of the owners, David Greenham. And we would like to respectfully request approval for pre-mix drinks. The commission had approved Davis during track in two thousand eighteen at their original location on Tean Street. And they were serving pre-mix drinks until twenty twenty, when they lost their lease and they had terminated their lease. And so they were offering their pre-mix drinks that influence. They were always getting approved for their pre-permit yearly, but yearly renewals were never a problem. They would have any class cards and we would like to again request for the same money, the same drink and with menu for this new location and therefore would like to request that maybe with some the same pre-mix drinks at every location.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. And thank you for providing us the liberty of including the recipes on your correspondence here.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Ms. Cole, could I just confirm? I think I heard you say that this is the same recipes that we previously approved at the prior location?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then I have one more question. When are you guys gonna open?
I asked the same question. We're just crossing our fingers. We thought we would be open by December, but the permitting, I don't wanna, Commissioner Lee stepped down. We're having issues with the, with the permitting and hopefully Commissioner Lee can get that, that permit.
So it's his fault. Got it, got it.
One remaining concern in the message.
Yeah, because that's close by our office.
Dave is the operations owner and manager and again, if there's, anytime you guys wanna come in, you know, just text him and he's gonna hold all the season.
Uh-oh.
We'll strike that for the record.
Yeah, careful.
Yeah, we'll strike that for the record and we'll put it as a suggestion, as previously suggested, as reservations. So we'll, we'll strike it for the record. Thank you, however. Commissioners, type of action?
Motion to approve request number two-two dash two-four-three-two-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, request number two-two dash two-four-three-two-three. Any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none, chair votes aye. Request is approved. Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Thank you.
Okay, we will have Commissioner Lee back for agenda item number sixteen, please.
Yeah, everything's your fault.
Okay, calling agenda item number sixteen, request number two-two dash two-four-three-three-eight from, um, Mr. Shin Sato. Um, on behalf of Ni Tang LLC, Mr. Nishio.
Mr. I'm sorry, yeah, good afternoon, Chairman, uh, Commissioner Nishio, authorized to adjourn, uh, here in Lavalu, requested party, Ni Tang LLC.
Commissioners, of type of action or any questions?
Uh, motion to approve request number two-two dash two-four-three-three-e.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-two dash two-four-three-three-e, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, request is approved, thank you, Ms. Nishio.
Thank you.
Chair, motion to approve the adoption of decision and order for agenda items seventeen through twenty-three, Nekosa.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, uh, the draft of the adoption of decision and order for agenda item seventeen to twenty-three as previously circulated. Any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the adoption of decision and order for seventeen to twenty-three is approved. Going into adjudication, calling agenda item number twenty-four, seven-eleven stores.
Oh, yes, Chair, sorry, this is a possible conflict, I'll have to review some agenda items number twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six.
Okay, let the record reflect that Vice Chair Lee will be recused from agenda item number twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, okay, I believe Vice Chair Min will be handling adjudications on behalf of us today, Mr. Um, Commissioner Miyashiro is not, he's not, he's losing his voice, so he can't yell as.
Only now.
Hold a dress up.
Mr. Jacob, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Dan O'Jager, Deputy Corporation Counselor on behalf of the city and county of Honolulu. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission Members, Kenneth Huo appearing for the licensee, also appearing, this is Blake, Mr. Blake Yokotaki, officer and authorized agent, last name spelled Y-O-K-O-T-A-K-E. At this time, we are prepared to weigh reading of the charge, uh, as to agenda items twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, as to, uh, agenda item number twenty-four, enter a plea of no contest.
Uh, motion to accept the no contest fee for agenda item twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest fee for agenda item number twenty-four, any objections, any reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, no contest fee is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, uh, can you provide us a recommendation, please?
This violation occurred on September fourth, twenty-twenty-one, was a result of the ACE project, the employee of the licensee did ask for ID, however, uh, the ID was vertical, the employee failed to ask that the individual was twenty-one. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Mr. Who, Mr. Yokotaki, um.
Yes, we've been here before, you know, we've had crop problems, uh, COVID has presented us challenges with regard to the hiring and retention of good employees. We just need to get our employees to be more careful in what they're doing.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number twenty-four, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the one thousand dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item twenty-four. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, seven-eleven stores.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Kenneth Huo appearing for the licensee, also appearing again, Blake Yokotaki, authorized agent and officer, will weigh reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest fee for agenda item twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the no contest fee for agenda item number twenty-five, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the no contest fee is accepted.
Mr. Jacob.
This violation occurred on September seventh, twenty-twenty-one, was a result of the ACE project, the licensee employee did ask for ID, the ID was vertical, the employee did not ask that the individual was twenty-one. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
This is the Waymanalo location, correct?
That's correct.
Is the employee who sold the alcohol to the minors still employed there?
Blake, uh, your, your, it is our policy to terminate the employees who have, uh, submitted this offense.
All right, thank you. A motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number twenty-five. Any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the one thousand dollar penalty, um, recommended penalty is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, seven-eleven stores.
Madam Chair, Commission Members, Kenneth Huo appearing for the licensee, also appearing again, Blake Yokotaki, uh, will weigh reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest fee.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the no contest fee for agenda item number twenty-six, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, no contest fee is accepted.
Mr. Jacob.
This violation occurred on September eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, was a result of the ACE project, the employee did ask for ID, the ID was vertical, employee did not ask that the individual was twenty-one. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
You folks know the drill and you folks see that these are all in September, that's around the same time of year that we do the ACE project checks, August and September. The notices sent out to you folks, you should be hammering all of your employees that this is the rule, this is the time of year where you're able to use the force of the commission to instill in the minds of those employees how serious this is, okay, so please take that opportunity. This comes around every year, you guys are longtime licenses, let's try and have a better result next year. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number twenty-six. Any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the one thousand dollar penalty or fee is, um, imposed for agenda item number twenty-six, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Who, thank you, Mr. Yokotaki.
Can we get Vice Chair Lee back, please? Please come in, join us.
Still no snap.
Yes.
Still no snap.
Okay, Vice Chair Lee is back, we are going to agenda item number twenty-seven, Beer Lab Floyd.
Uh, Commissioners, I believe I spoke to the president of the licensee, he has requested a continuance until February seventeenth, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-seven to February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item twenty-seven to February seventeen, twenty-twenty-two, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the agenda item twenty-seven is continuing to February seventeen, twenty-twenty-two. Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, Food Land Supermarket.
Sorry, Chair, due to another possible conflict of interest on this agenda item.
Okay, let the record reflect that Vice Chair Lee will be recused for agenda item number twenty-eight.
Uh, Madam Chair, um, also I will need to recuse for, um, from this item due to a possible conflict of interest.
Okay, and let the record reflect that Commissioner Hollinger will also be recused from agenda item number twenty-eight. Um, just a side comment, um, as always, if we have quarrel, I know that, I know that Commissioner Miyashiro is not feeling well, so I will also, in being kind to, be able to, if he cannot continue.
Will you take a short break?
Sure, sure, Mr. Rilofa, any, it's, okay, let's, let's pause for a brief recess, um, to maintain quarrel, you know, Commissioner Miyashiro came in and he is not feeling well, so let's go ahead and move forward. We're recording in progress. Okay, we're back on, we're gonna recall the matter, um, okay, we're recalling agenda item number twenty-eight, Food Land Supermarket, thank you for allowing us that, um, brief recess. Um, after agenda item twenty-eight, I believe we're gonna lose Commissioner Miyashiro and we wish him the best in recovering for next week's hearing. Mr. Rilofa?
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Commission, Mr. Ria Robert Rilofa on behalf of Food Land, also present via Zoom is Mr. Brian Luna, he's the district manager of Food Land. At this time, we're reading of the charge and to appeal no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest fee.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest fee for agenda item number twenty-eight, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the no contest fee is accepted.
Mr. Jacob.
This violation occurred on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, was a result of the ACE project, the employee did ask for ID, the ID was vertical, the employee did not ask if the individual was twenty-one. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Mr. Rilofa?
In this matter, we believe the cashier did enter the wrong date, she did request for the ID as trained, um, but I think there was an input error. We do have our employees trained via online and in person on the, to prevent the sale of liquor to minors. Um, we also stress the importance, we have meetings, it stressed the importance of checking ID, of course, and closely examining it, and of course entering it correctly, we did, we always tell them about vertical IDs and how you should, you know, that's a red flag and you should be concerned about it, unfortunately, this, this incident did occur.
And in your training, you folks also, uh, tell them that if they're in doubt, to just deny the sale?
Absolutely, deny the sale or seek a second opinion, of course, yes.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of a thousand dollars.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number twenty-eight, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the one thousand dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number twenty-eight, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we get Commissioner Hollinger and Vice Chair Lee back and let the record reflect that, um, Commissioner Miyashiro will be excused for the duration of the meeting.
I actually have, um, uh, Vice Chair Lee marked out for call-o, for twenty-nine on his.
Oh, let's give this.
But we'll get, no, we'll get.
Yeah, you get, yeah, Hollinger, no, I, I bet.
Oh, sorry, we'll have, yeah, Hollinger, that's right.
Thank you.
Well, you think, yeah.
Call-o twenty-nine?
Nope.
No?
Okay.
I think I put for the right one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have number twenty-seven, that's why.
It's on, it's just on your form is all.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Okay, I will do that.
Okay, so calling agenda item number twenty-nine, call-o Hawaiian, who is here. Hello, sir.
Hello, hi, SR Ezekiel Infio, spelled Z-E-K-I-E-L, last name is Infio, I-N-F-I-E-L.
Thank you. Mr. Jacob.
Honored about September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with any other laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or in time to time thereafter, to wit proclamation of emergency order number twenty-one dash thirteen, COVID nineteen, novel coronavirus dated September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, in violation of section two eight one dash three eight of COVID by statutes.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
Guilty.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the guilty plea for agenda item number twenty-nine, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, uh, guilty plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on September thirty, twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, investigators witnessed, uh, individuals consuming alcohol, this is licensee's first violation, recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Chair, you have any comment?
Uh, yes, uh, there was no one at the bar, present at the bar at that time, um, it was fifteen minutes after ten o'clock, and the glass was sitting right there where there was actually no guest actually at the bar top, so.
Do you understand, um, why the violation occurred?
It's liquor on premise, yes, it needs to be cleared before a lot of time.
Okay, thank you. Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty-nine, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the five hundred dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item twenty-nine, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number thirty, Kanioke Shell Food Bar.
Commissioners, I believe Mr. Blue was on the, on the, uh, office, but he is no longer with us, still we'd get a request to continuance on this matter until February seventeenth, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty to February seventeenth.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number thirty to February seventeenth, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, agenda item thirty will be continued to February seventeenth. Calling agenda item thirty-one, Kanioke Shell Food Bar.
Again, Commissioners, Mr. Blue has requested a continuance until February seventeenth, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-one to February seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number thirty-one to February seventeen, twenty-twenty-two, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, agenda item thirty-one will be continued to February seventeen, twenty-twenty-two. Calling agenda item number thirty-two, Kanioke Shell Food Bar.
Commissioners, once again, Mr. Blue has requested a continuance until February seventeenth, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-two to February seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number thirty-two to February seventeenth, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, agenda item thirty-two is continued to February seventeen, twenty-twenty-two. Calling agenda item number thirty-three, Lucky Hole.
Hello. Hi.
Hello.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Hee Jong Young, I'm of Lucky Hole.
Can you spell your name, please?
My name is Hee Jong Young, H-E-A-Y-O-E, last name Y-O-E.
Um, and are you the owner of the business?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jacob, go ahead.
Honored about October sixth, twenty-twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with any other laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue or such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to wit proclamation of emergency order number twenty-one dash thirteen, COVID nineteen, novel coronavirus dated September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, in violation of section two eight one dash three eight, simple by statutes.
Ma'am, how would you like to plead? You can accept the charges, deny, you accept?
Yes. Yes.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the, accept the plea for agenda item number thirty-three, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, uh, the plea is accepted for agenda item number thirty-three.
Mr. Jacob, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on October sixth, twenty-twenty-one, where investigators witnessed employees not wearing masks and customers not wearing masks, uh, also customers were singing without masks. This is licensee's third violation, the recommended fine is one thousand dollars. The first violation occurred on October eleventh, twenty-twenty, licensee paid five hundred dollars. The second violation occurred on November seventh, twenty-twenty, licensee paid seven hundred and thirty dollars, uh, licensee was subsequently issued a warning on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Again, this is third violation, recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Ma'am, this is your third violation, three times.
Yes.
Um, can you please explain to us what the problem is?
Yeah, because my worker is, they put it in the mask, but sometimes I cannot hear the customer talking, it doesn't, they should come putting down the talking, that, that is fine, and then also, there's a button that they don't play in the mask, but they put it in mask, but they put it in, seeing in their, they're talking, that's more, better.
Okay, what are you going to do to fix this? Because we don't want to see you back for another violation, three times already. We, we don't wanna see another one because if, if, if you come back for a fourth violation of the same thing, um, we would be implying to suspend or revoke your license, cancel your license. So what are you gonna do to make sure that your employees and customers are wearing their mask properly?
I will, I wanna tell them all the time, please put it in the mask, you know, always I tell that, so I wanna make him make sure to, I think he can.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number thirty-three, any objections, any with reservations seeing none, chair votes aye, the one thousand dollar penalty. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the one thousand dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirty three. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Calling agenda item number thirty four, Cyan Garden Cafe.
And then, other members of the commission, this is Derek Nakamura. I'm, I'll try to speak up the cap of Cyan Garden Cafe and listen to Jaja, the primary owner of, uh, the cafe. Uh, we are going to plead not guilty, and I'd like to make short statement, is that all right?
Um, if you're going to, um, deny the charge, plead not guilty, um, we would need to schedule you for a contested hearing at a later date, um, Mister Nakamura. Uh, you can make a brief statement, um, very brief right now if you'd like, but, um, that will not be, will not take that into account, um, in the contested case.
I understand that.
Okay, so, uh, you, you want to, you want to move forward with a contested case at a later date, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so point and make your statement.
Yeah, I'd like to apologize to Mister Jacob, I told them yesterday that, um, doors were locked when the commissioners arrived. I found out from my clients that actually the doors are open because that's what the liquor told them to do. Uh, at night, it's a place where there are homeless people and such as a night of violation. Uh, I can't understand, I cannot understand, as long as my clients, why there was a violation. They were sitting in the back of the restaurant, the lights were down.
Sir, 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 I'm sorry, sir, we, we cannot, we cannot, um, we, we cannot take that, um, into account right now. We can listen to your arguments at a contested case when we schedule it for a later date, but at this time, we are not, we cannot entertain your arguments at this time.
Okay, I'll do a little bit of argument, that's fine.
Okay, well, we, we can listen to the facts and, and, and your, your version of the story at the contested hearing. Um, Mister Jacob, would you, um, do we need a date certain, or is this a? Oh, I'm sorry. Ah, okay. Uh, Mister Nakamura, this is our new procedure, so I'm gonna read this into the record and, um, you can also, uh, be provided a copy of this. Uh, since you have pled not guilty and wish to return for a contested hearing, there are a few procedures that the commission requires you to follow. First, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other their proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested hearing. Second, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each wis- witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, because we are proceeding with remote adjudication hearings, each party's exhibits must be uploaded to the Liquor Commission's Google Drive. By four o'clock P M on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the Liquor Commission's web, website. If you have physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the Liquor Commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates, or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information. Uh, Mister Nakamura, do you have any questions about these procedures?
No.
Okay, um, so we, uh, let's see, a motion to continue agenda item thirty four, Cyan Garden Cafe, uh, to the next available date for contested hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and second to continue agenda item number thirty four, to schedule for a contested hearing. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, agenda item number thirty four, will we continue to schedule for an adjudication hearing? Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number thirty five, Stone, Stone Fish Grill.
It's going to be scheduled later.
Mister Nakamura, please mute, thank you.
Um, Kanani Ari here, last name is spelled O U R Y, general manager for Stone Fish Grill in Hawaii.
Thank you, Ms. Ari, uh, Mister Jacob.
Honored about November thirtieth, twenty twenty, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the license premise who is registered with the commission or is subject to registration. On the date and in such manner as directed by the commission, in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point eight of the rules of the commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Ari, how would you like to plead?
I'm guilty.
Motion to accept the guilty plea.
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the guilty plea for agenda item number thirty five. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the guilty plea is accepted.
Mister Jacob, your recommendation, please.
This is licensee's first violation, recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Ari, would you like to make any statement or any comments?
No, I mean, I'm very sorry, it was just a change of management at the time and it was, uh, oversight, so we apologize.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and second to, um, approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number thirty five. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, the two hundred and fifty dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirty five. Calling agenda item number thirty six, Stone Fish Grill.
Again, Kanani Ari here, last name is O U R Y, general manager, thank you.
Mister Jacob, the chart, please.
Honored about September twenty second, twenty twenty one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with any other laws applicable to the business of licensee. Whether in existence at the time of issue or of such license or inactive or amended from time to time thereafter, to wit proclamation of emergency order number twenty twenty one dash thirteen COVID nineteen. Novel coronavirus dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty one, in violation of section two eight one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii Statutes.
Ms. Ari, how would you like to plead?
Put you with explanation, please.
Motion to accept the guilty plea.
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the guilty plea for agenda item number thirty six. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the guilty plea is accepted.
Uh, Mister Jacob, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on September twenty second, twenty twenty one, where the licensee was found to not be verifying vaccination records, this is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Ms. Ari, go ahead.
Uh, we asked for leniency in the finding, uh, of this particular, uh, instance. We did have, uh, safeties in place for our hostess to be checking vaccination cards and we were recording it and have documentation of such at that time. Um, Liquor Commission came in towards the end of the evening while the hostess was completing their closing duties. They did manage to check in the first liquor commissioner that came in, um, the second liquor commissioner had waited back and came in after the fact while the hostess was away from the hostess stand. Um, and thereby slipped by our procedures. We have stents put in the A second safety procedure where our servers, there's like a, there's basically a sign on the table which the hostess takes away when checking guests in. So that the servers know whether or not the hostess popped the person, um, with their vaccination check-in so that our staff is more aware and more proactive. It was shortly after the emergency order was in place, um, and we just asked for a little bit of leniency because we've already been shut down for twenty four hours due to this violation. And have lost a substantial amount of income because of it, um, it's just been a really rough year, so we're just asking that you folks can find, um, a little bit of kindness for us here.
If, if I recall, uh, ma'am, you folks opened this restaurant right before COVID nineteen happened, right? You folks, I think, were licensed in twenty nineteen, is that correct? All right, uh, motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
It's been moved and second to, um, issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty six. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item thirty six. Thank you, Ms. Ari.
Thank you, Ms. Ari.
Thank you so much.
Okay, calling agenda item number thirty seven, Cyan Paradise Restaurant.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission, Emmanuel Zebakalam, here on behalf of Cyan Paradise Restaurant and Sports Club. Additionally, uh, on the line is one of the members, uh, I'm gonna spell her name as I will not do it justice, it's S U T T I N E E. Last name W I Y A N A T. Uh, and she's a member of the company. Uh, we waive reading, uh, the charges and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty seven.
Second.
It's been moved and, moved and second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty seven. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the no contest plea is accepted for agenda item number thirty seven. Uh, just point of clarification, do, do we do have a tentative by, by that name?
Yes, I'm trying to get to, um, turn on the camera.
Oh, okay, okay, so yeah, okay, there, there, there's, there's.
Uh, Mister Jacob, what is your recommendation?
Failureion occurred on August thirty first, twenty twenty one, where the licensee failed, failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mister Zebakalam.
Uh, yes, so the violation did occur, I have spoken with the, the member, uh, in question. And have explained the processes that they need to go through moving forward, uh, she informed me that a full list will be submitted to the commission within seven days.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars and require submission of the employee list within seventy.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars and the privilege provided in Vice Chairman's motion. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the two hundred and fifty dollar penalty will be imposed. Okay, calling agenda item number thirty eight, Cyan Paradise Restaurant.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission, Emmanuel Zebakalam, here on behalf of Cyan Paradise Restaurant and Sports Club. Uh, additionally, on the Zoom call, uh, once again, I'll spell the name, S U T T I N E E, last name W I Y A N A T. Uh, she's a member of the organization, uh, we waive the right to reading of the charges and enter in a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty.
Second.
It's been moved and, uh, just for clarification, according to my records, Wayne Luke, uh, presided over this case and a not guilty plea was entered in. So we are now retracting that and we are now going with a no contest plea and counsel will be Emmanuel Zebakalam.
Correct.
Okay, um, motion to approve the, um, the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty eight. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the no contest plea will be accepted.
Mister Jacob.
This violation occurred on October second, twenty twenty, where investigators witnessed a patient standing behind a bar with blood clots containing alcohol. Um, after the hours prohibited by the mayor's order, this is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mister Zebakalam.
Uh, yes, from what I understand, uh, the individuals were there past the hours of closing, um, the beverages were supposed to be finished, uh, and, and taken off the bar. But during the, uh, closing cleaning procedures, they did not take the beverages off the bar and, and so the, uh, violation was incurred.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number thirty three. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the five hundred dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirty three. Calling agenda item number thirty nine, Cyan Paradise Restaurant.
Uh, hello, Chair, Vice Chair, uh, members of the commission, Emmanuel Zebakalam, here on behalf of Cyan Paradise Restaurant and Sports Car, uh, Sports Club. Once again, uh, the individual that I spoke and listed their name before, uh, is on Zoom, we waive the reading of the charges and enter in a plea of no.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty nine. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mister Jacob.
This violation occurred on November sixth, twenty twenty, where investigators saw, uh, more than fifteen, at least fifteen people after ten P M consuming alcohol. First violation, recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Um, sorry.
Go ahead.
With your indulgence, um, yes, so this was during the, the COVID pandemic and there was some adjustment in regards to, uh, how to operate. Uh, at this time, the client has been, uh, spoken to and explained, uh, we have explained the necessary rules in which they have to abide by for the COVID nineteen regulations. Uh, additionally, a- as they are changing, uh, we hope to ensure that they have the ability to engage in those rules so that they can, uh, comply in a manner that's appropriate.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number thirty nine. Any objections, any reservations, seeing none, chair votes eye, the five hundred dollar penalty will be imposed for agenda item number thirty nine. Thank you, Mister Zebakalam.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to other business, agenda item number forty, Liquor Administrator, Digestive Update, Miss Hori.
Um, I don't have anything in addition to what I had, uh, previously distributed in the weekly report and, um, yeah, nothing further at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Hori, agenda item number forty one, Liquor Administrator, Mister Fakar.
Beautiful, so no adjudicating matters, good job.
Okay, there is nothing else, um, needing this, a chart, this is.